Welcome, everyone. Today is April 11th. That is 7:03 and I'm going to call the meeting to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Education for our April meeting. We start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, I called Herb. He's gonna be getting on.
Oh, okay, great. We'll see him in a minute then. We will move ahead, though, with present to speak, which is next on our agenda. We invite residents in town to speak to the board. At the beginning and end of our meetings, we ask that you start with your name and address for the record, first name and last name, as well as to keep your comments to a maximum of three minutes. And the total amount of time to 20 minutes for this part of the agenda. So. Nick, I see your hand.
Hey, Nikelle, 49 Myrtle in the car. So hopefully the audio is okay. I have five points I wanted to quickly touch on for now. And what I hope this board can hold board members accountable for what the post office said was behavior that was unauthorized. Or are we going to ignore and let the actions of those board members go without consequences? Do we teach our kids all people are held accountable? In regards to the discussion around the CIP money later in the meeting, I feel it's completely inappropriate for the SBC to be mentioned as where the money is to go to as one of the descriptions, especially when the voters have shown the SBC's job is complete. They didn't want to listen. The SBC didn't want to listen to people to change their charge, and they shouldn't have the right to change it now, again, after already ignoring the townspeople. Having the money labeled for school repairs is what should be done. This board needs to strongly consider making moves to get the school repairs done instead of playing politics and delaying the repairs. Get a contract out to identify a plan that is fiscally responsible to do the repairs over the years as soon as possible. Let's stop delaying. If a board is necessary, then let's make one that's diverse and understands we can't hurt the taxpayer while making the repairs. Let's also have an emotional, let's not have an emotional response and try to, and so it's not having an emotional response and do all $19 million at once. Again, let's do it responsibly and generate the money without wasting bond interest payments, which just leaves us throwing money away. It's time to put the kids ahead of personal legacies. In closing, I think Rick Maloney, his letter was very well written, and I hope it's given strong consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present to speak? If you would please raise your hand either using the reaction button or come on the video screen by starting the video, and then we can see you.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me, Herb? Um, can someone else speak and see if I can hear you?
Can you hear me, Herb?
I can hear you, Laura. Yeah, Herb, I think the problems with your computer.
We can hear you. I don't think he can.
We can hear you, Herb. Can someone text Herb and see if he can either adjust the volume on his screen? Or if he can join us by phone. I know sometimes we've had audio difficulties before.
Michelle, I can't hear you.
I know. I know. We can hear each other, but not, but you can't hear us. One moment. Yeah. Okay, we have generally resolved these over time either by using a telephone as well or having additional technical assistance. So we'll, we'll see what we can do, Herb. Did you just text him or email him, Phil? Okay. Okay. He's looking at the screen, so I'm not sure if he's looking at his phone or if that's a Okay.
Hope it's blurry.
Okay. So then, moving ahead, we'll move on to the first section of the agenda is the presentation of the Food Services Program.
Yep, give me one second, please. So Stephanie Knight is here with me. I'm just gonna share my screen. And so you can see, hopefully you can see what's on my screen. And Michelle, I'm gonna ask you can monitor the folks coming in or out. So Stephanie and I worked on this presentation together. This is really just to kind of give the board a high level overview of the Food Services Program. And just to show you kind of what's, what's happening, where we've been, where we're going, that type of thing. And so we're gonna try and go through the whole presentation and afterwards we can open it up for questions if that works for you. So first thing I'm gonna do is pass it off to Stephanie and she can do the overview of the program.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you for the time to let me speak about the Food Services Program. We're gonna go over the purpose, the facilities, the staff. Nutritional information, breakfast, lunch, and the food services fund and new initiatives happening with the Food Service Program. So the purpose of the Food Service Program is to provide nutritious meals.
When I'm speaking.
Okay. And we all know that breakfast and lunch is critical to students' health and well-being. And, you know, the proper nutrition to learn. And we we work hard every day to make sure our children in Wellington Public Schools are eating breakfast and lunch, you know, the most important meals of the day for the children to learn. We'll move on to the next one, Phil.
Sure.
We have two kitchens, because, you know, we have two schools. HMS has a bigger kitchen. And we have a lot more equipment and we have a bigger freezer. So we store a lot of the food at Hall School and I bring it up in my personal vehicle to Center School. And, and Center School's kitchen is a little smaller. So we don't have enough, a lot of space. So they basically just have their, their weekly stuff up there. But Hall School stores most of the product for them. And there's some pictures of our kitchens, the equipment that we have. I do want to say that we are doing pretty good, I knock on wood, maintaining all our stuff. A lot of our equipment is very old. So we have two refrigerators are over 25 years old. The freezer, I'm now discovering, is over 20 years old. That Hobart mixer that you see there is about 35 years old. And the dishwasher is also, I don't know exactly the age of that, but I believe that was installed within the last 15 to 20 years. Tilt skillet, which we love. So our stove is very old as well. Our stove is about 25 years old. Sitting at Center School. There's their kitchen there. So as you can see. And that was remodeled, I believe, back in over 20 years ago, the kitchen there. So.
Oh, okay.
One of the things that, and Stephanie and I have talked about this quite a bit, and we've heard this from contractors, when something breaks and we have it repaired. We do have a couple pieces of equipment that, it's that phrase, they don't make them like they used to. And they've said, keep this going as long as you can. Whereas maybe there's some others that, you know, we need to start to look at replacing. So we're in conversation about that and trying to balance that. But just you get a sense of what's there for equipment.
Yeah, we, we finished, we fixed that double door refrigerator. We fixed the compressor in it. Because it was that one right there. That one is eight years old, but it was worth it to fix it because the rest of the bones of it was good. So we, we opted to just fix the compressor in it. So. And now here is, here are the staff members of the Food Service Team, which I call Team Awesome. We have, Center School has one head cook and one cafeteria worker. Hall School has one head cook and two cafeteria workers. HMS, you have Dawn Chicky, Vanessa Wade, and Kelly Viall. At Center School, you have Rosalie Gorman and Jennifer Woodworth. I would like to say that Dawn Chicky has been with us 22 years, I believe. And Rosalie Gorman has been with us 14 years and Vanessa, five years. And then Kelly and Jennifer joined our Team Awesome this school year and everything, working out wonderfully, fit right in with our team. So they're great. In Wellington, we run the National School Lunch Program, NSLP for short. It's a fairly assisted meal program that provides sufficiently balanced, low cost or no cost lunches to children each school day. Obviously, this was put into effect in 1946. And participating schools receive cash subsidies as well as nutritious 100% domestic foods known as USDA foods, which is what I was talking about that's stored in Hall School's freezer. And that I bring back and forth to our, back to Center School. For each reimbursable meal, we serve, in addition, in exchange, schools and institutions must serve lunches that meet the federal meal pattern requirements and offer them at free or reduced prices to eligible children. So free or reduced, so as you know, the students are eating for free this school year and will be for the rest of the school year. But we still encourage families to fill out free and reduced forms because that helps with other things in our school system as well. Okay. So here's nutritional information. Now, by law, because we're on the National School Lunch Program, the school meal nutrition standards require schools to offer students the right balance of fruits, vegetables, low fat, or fat-free milk, whole grains and protein foods. We are under new school meal nutrition standards, which are like low sodium and stuff like that. Kids have to consume so many fruits and veggies weekly through us. Wellington, we are an offer versus serve school system. So that means, and there's five components, as you can see in the photo of a lunch, and that's meat, meat, alternative grains, fruit, vegetables, and milk. And under offer versus serve, the student must take at least three of the five components, and one of those must be a fruit or vegetable. So I would just like to say that I, I go around and, and to the, during the school day in the lunchroom and talk with the students and there was a student that we, you know, we require them to take her food or vegetable. So she took green peppers one day and she's never tried them before. And she tried them and actually loves, loved them. So now she eats them every day. So I say that's a win for us. So we like to see that. But I do like to communicate with the kids daily and see their likes and dislikes and all that stuff. So here's about our breakfast. Eating breakfast at school is associated with better attendance rates and better test scores. I will also say that at Hall School, we eat, we serve breakfast at 7:30 and the kids, you know, it's too early for them. So I encourage them to come get breakfast and then eat it when they have a moment, you know, in between classes or whatnot. And I had a student that was too nervous to come through and get it. And I've been working with her, encouraging her to come down and get it. Now she gets breakfast with us every day. It's just taking that extra step to get them into the kitchen and come see us. So it's great. And another win. So breakfast components are grain, fruit or vegetable. Now, it sounds funny, but we do serve carrots with breakfast. Some kids love them in milk. And we offer a balance of prepackaged and fresh items. And then they're served to meet USDA guidelines. So what you see, like you see the cereal, but especially formulated for the National School Lunch Program. So it's have reduced sugar and whole grain. That's a one ounce serving. And it also comes with, we offer graham crackers with it to make the extra grain count. As you can see here, we have yogurt parfaits. We serve and smoothies. We serve those at, Hall School has that choice daily. I am working on bringing that to Center School every day. As you know, there's only two workers up there and I, their kitchen is much smaller. So I'm trying to figure out how we can make this work to offer those students as well. Those fresh items daily. And then next slide. Thank you. During March 6th through 10th, we celebrated National School Breakfast Week. We, we went wild with this one. We were decorated with construction workers every day, as you can see in the top right hand side. That's me. That poster was made by one of our sixth grade students at Hall School, which was great. But we, I tried to pick one new item every day and then I got what their favorite item was. So we did berry pancake sundays. We offered smoothies. The caramel apple yogurt parfait, oatmeal with a sort of toppings, and then yogurt parfaits with berries and granola. The smoothies were the top item that the kids loved. The oatmeal was the least favorite. I do have some students at Hall School that have requested oatmeal, so we will do that again at Hall School, but Center School. We might try it again in, you know, in the coming months, but it wasn't the top, top seller. So, but we tried. Kids like what they like. All right. So here's about our lunch. So last year, we served about 52,852 lunches. We are pregnant between both schools. We serve about 320 a day, which I think is amazing because, you know, we only have about 410 students in our school system. So and lunch components, like I said before, grain, protein, vegetable, fruit, and milk, you know, where we're off versus serve school. So you know, they take three of those five components. So there's some of our lunches. Center School gets offered four choices a day. Hall School has a variety of choices. Hall School is able, we, we do two hot meals, the menu item, and then a second hot meal, which varies every day. And then every day they can choose from the muffin yogurt lunch, the cereal lunch, the bale yogurt lunch. All that. They have chef salads and sandwiches. And this is all at Hall School. Because like we have the three, three people, they're a bigger kitchen. But every day the students who get a choice of all those, that rainbow curve veggies you see there. And then there's a rainbow color of fresh fruit, fresh fruit. And we also do canned fruit as well. Apples and oranges are offered every day. So we have, we have quite the variety in Wellington. And I pride myself on our fresh fruits and veggies that we serve to the students.
Stephanie, I just realized, I don't know how we didn't put the tomato soup in the grilled cheese because that's my favorite lunch. And I came over for, and we ended up with chicken noodle soup on that picture. So.
Yeah, well. I, yeah, usually we serve tomato soup, chicken noodle isn't always one that we serve. I always do tomato soup with it because it is a big hit. The kids like the tomato soup.
So I'll take this slide. This is we, obviously, we do the lunch balance. And I've said this to you for the last couple of years with, with free meals and the reimbursements that we're getting as part of the free meals from the government and having a high usage for breakfast and lunch. Just a couple of years ago, this account was struggling to stay above $10,000. And this account is well over $200,000 right now. So from the standpoint of being able to, the government right now, Connecticut has said that they will have free breakfast and lunch through the end of this year. And there is a very good chance that we will have the funding right now to cover all of next year. So we think it's about 30,000 a month is what we look at. It depends. And that 30,000 is, doesn't include the reimbursements that we continue to get. So even though we spend 30,000, we get money back. And again, it's all part of that National School Lunch Program and, and, you know, the meeting, the USDA guidelines. So we get those reimbursements back. And so you know, Stephanie and I are looking at a couple of things. One is, you know, moving forward and continuing to make it better. You know, in identifying the use of these funds beyond, you know, the providing free lunches for and breakfasts for students. But also just improvements in general to whether it's equipment, whether it's additional foods, whether it's local things, and we'll talk about that as we move forward. Anything you wanted to add to that, Stephanie?
I had trouble unmuting. I, no, I mean, I, I'm very happy with, you know, how far we've come and where we're headed. So I think it's great. And this really is because students are eating our meals, really. All right. So we have new things on the horizon for Wellington Food Services. I am working on a farm-to-school program. I'm working on coordinating with local farmers to bring in, you know, local food for our schools, whether it be, you know, meat, protein, the fruit and veggies. It's tough because we're in Connecticut. So, you know, the, the good fruits and veggies are grown in the summertime. So, but I will be being, coming established with some local farmers in Connecticut to try to provide fresh things grown locally for our students. We are also transitioning new software with WordWare. We're transferring to transitioning into Titan slash Link. And that's going to improve our efficiency with the Food Services Department. We are, we have, we will now have front of house software and back of house software, which will help me with the back of house stuff with our recipes and stuff like that, because we will eventually have another administrative review. So that's, I'm just gonna get the ball rolling with that to have all the tucks in a row, if you will. So that's what's happening. So thank you very much. There any questions?
Okay, thank you so much, Stephanie. And if we can jump to see everybody's face, that's great. Board members, I can see all of you raise your hands either in person or on the screen if you want to be recognized. Donna, I see your hand is up.
Guys, having trouble unmuting too. Thank you, Stephanie, for that presentation. I appreciate it. And, and you actually answered some of my questions as you were going along. One of my concerns is when I took a look at, can you give me an idea how big a one ounce serving of cereal is as far as like, is it a half a cup, a quarter of a cup?
Yeah, it's about a half a cup serving of cereal. Yep.
All right. Um, when I just looked at the choices, and I know that you said that they're specially formulated for schools.
Yep.
But I'm having trouble reconciling having Cocoa Puffs, cinnamon, Toasty Crunch as, as healthy options. You know, they just, are they, what kind of carbs, you know, total carbs would be in something like, and you may not know this off the top of your head. So I don't expect that, you know, you can always just get the information to fill. I'm just concerned that it looks like there's a whole lot of sugars and not much protein. And with childhood obesity on the rise and diabetic issues on the rise. Teaching these kids, you know, the fruits and the vegetables look awesome. I'm just concerned about the sugars in the high carbs with not having any protein because they need that too.
Correct. So I, you know, we run the National School Lunch Program, so I basically serve what I have to serve to the children, what I, is required from me to, to, to serve to them. And unfortunately, you know, it's they, the federal government basically tells me what I can serve the students. So and they are specially formulated, so it's less sugar than what you would purchase at the grocery store. And basically, the kids like what they like. If I gave them raisin bran, they aren't going to be happy with me. So I am trying to bring other choices to the students. So the fresh smoothies and, and that stuff. So we are moving in the right direction. It's just gonna take some time.
I think that's about balance too, Donna, is that the one thing that you don't see in this, in this presentation is, you know, and I've seen this as administrators, is watching students go through the lines in the, you know, any of the cafeteria staff saying, hey, you need a fruit or vegetable, or you want another fruit or vegetable is, is that encouragement of that and having that balance and making sure they, they meet that requirement. So again, that balance is really important.
Can I also add that for a growing child, carbs are necessary for their growth too. And so, and we, I, I mean, I can't put them on a low carb diet. So I just, what I, what I, what I have to, what I can and have to serve to them. So.
Now, I was, I was kind of looking at it, looked like it was really light on the protein. So to, to balance everything out, I'm not an official nutritionist. I just spend a lot of time balancing my carbs and my proteins.
Yeah, we, you know, I do too. And I understand that. I, it's just with breakfast, the requirement is, is a grain and a fruit or vegetable. So I do offer proteins, but the kids, like I said, once again, they take what they want. They want what they want. So and then they have their milk with their cereal too. So and at lunchtime, they get the protein and more of a balance, you know, with the protein and the grain and the, the fruit and vegetable. So.
Thank you. I see you have your hand up, Laura.
Yeah, I, I had a couple of things, but I was gonna mention, you know, with the cereal, I, I done, I, I get it, right? Because that's the thing I'm always watching are the, are the simple sugars, which is a different formulation. But cereal is, can be a vehicle for drinking milk and milk has a lot of protein. So if they're, if they are, if we're getting milk in them with the cereal, they're getting protein. Protein is, is honestly in the American diet, not typically an issue. And they'll probably get enough protein in the lunch also. But sugar certainly, I, I'm with you. That's a concern. The thing that I was thinking about actually was with milk. Because my husband right now is not able to drink dairy. And there, there are many children who are lactose intolerant. My daughter had severe, has, has severe peanut allergy. So I'm wondering how, how you're dealing with students with different types of allergies.
So for the dairy allergies, we have, we get lactaid milk for those students. I do have to have a doctor's note on file that these students, for, for their food allergies. We always, we always have for other food allergies. You know, we separate the severe, so peanut butter, everything is separate from everything else. We do the best we can. And, yeah, the dairy allergies, we do offer lactaid milk and I do require a doctor's note. So we do have that. They, they still can get milk. It's just lactaid milk.
Great. And then the other thing, I just, I wanted to, I should have said, thank you. The, the presentation was very informative. I'm, I'm loving the farm-to-school program and hoping that that's something that you can definitely move forward with. My, my oldest daughter was actually involved in that in some schools in northern Vermont. So talk about having a limited growing season. But, you know, whatever, you know, whatever can be done to, to bring in more fresh fruits and vegetables and, and local, certainly. I, I just is a good thing for the students, for the local economy, for, you know, so, so in so many ways. So that, that I think is great.
Other questions? Before you go again, Donna, I want to double check Herb. I see that you are on screen and I'm thinking maybe the telephone might be your solution to the audio sounds, but I can't be sure. And I think we are unable to I can hear us. We can hear you. You can hear us? Okay. I just wanted to do an audio check to make sure you could ask a question and unmute because I was unable to do that with the phone. Excellent. Okay, Donna, I see your hands up.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. Are all the breakfast and lunches free for all of our students currently?
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Additional questions? Go ahead, Brianna.
Hi, thanks, Steph, for joining us from wherever you live in the happy world.
You know where I am.
Thank you for taking the time and thank you to your family for allowing you to take the time to come and do this important presentation for us. And also, I just have to say thank you to you and your staff without getting all mushy. My daughter needed a grown up in Center School and Rosalie Gorman in the cafeteria saved her every day. So your staff is so important. And we love you. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't call them Team Awesome for nothing.
Brianna, thanks for that reminder because all of our staff and teachers, including paraprofessionals, you know, there is no position that is unimportant in our schools because everyone plays a role in our success. And Stephanie, I do want to thank you very much. uh, everyone plays a role in our success, and Stephanie, I do want to thank you very much. I think you guys should be super proud of yourselves. Almost thirty thousand breakfasts and almost fifty three thousand lunches is a yeoman's task, and the fact that you drive them back and forth in your car to make sure there's fresh fruits and vegetables.
Yeah.
Um, I have to say, uh, it was really nice to see the presentation with the food and the pictures of the food. For those of us who aren't eating those lunches all the day, I have to say that it sure looks really interesting and good food, so I, I wouldn't mind eating lunch there. I wish you would come.
Hey, you guys are welcome. You're welcome to come in anytime. Come dine with us. We would love to have you guys.
It's a big step up from what I remember when I was a child, so it might just be the distance of time, but also the fact that you're able to offer so many things and so many choices. I love the fact that you're focusing on the choices, which really prevents waste, and, and that, uh, it, it makes it, makes your work much harder, but I think it's, it's really um, the, the right option for us to pursue, so. Um, not seeing any other questions. We will move on with the agenda, and Stephanie, allow you to continue on. I see people peeking through. Yeah, so we will let you uh, go back to your family. Thank you for joining us for the presentation, Stephanie.
Bye. Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, um, I know we moved that up. Phil, was there anything else? We've got that on the agenda further down.
Which part?
Yeah.
About the healthy food certification.
So we'll come back to that afterwards.
Is it my internet, folks, or is it Michelle's?
It could be. Michelle was lagging.
Mine.
Okay. Sorry, Michelle, I think you were asking me if, if there's more.
Really uncomfortable position, is that always the case? Okay. I thi, I think we're good. Can you hear me? No.
Yes, yes, you were lagging.
Me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, if worse comes to worse, I will go off video and, and save some reserves on that. Um, next agenda is chairman's report, so as long as I'm not lagging, I'll do a quick uh, note to our colleagues that um, there's uh, no one's surprised to hear a few weeks late that the referendum on the new school building did not pass. Um, and we will be uh, discussing that in terms of its implication as it regards to repairs for the building. We do have to do a full assessment of what the needs are. We know that there were some needs that were identified in the fire report, others that we've identified over time. Um, again, the one thing with this is we really have to have a full picture before we can move ahead. In part because there are some things that have to happen before others, because for example, you cannot, new ventilation uh, on the roof unless you have the two projects planned in a certain order, and also to prevent disruption of our students. Um, and also to plan for that. If we need to, to rent portable classrooms and have them outside, that's something we have to really prepare in advance and figure out what that might look like. Um, and similarly, um, all of those things would have to go through the process in order to uh, get um, both appropriate reimbursement from the state. Um, if we would be approved for any of those projects, so, um, there's definitely a whole lot of work ahead of us and ahead of others in town. Um, as we are looking at this, I think that um, one of the things we did hear loud and clear is that people wanted a clear sense of what the facilities in town, all the facilities in town were going to need, that they can't weigh priorities when they, they hear something about, you know, mold in the firehouse and other, other issues without being able to assess the impact, so I think that we probably need to coordinate a lot with our partners on the town side to get a sense of what all the facilities needs are. Um, and that may require um, some additional uh, staffing, whether it's consultant or actual staff, to do the assessment. I know that uh, Phil has been dedicating a good bit of time to the school building committee. Um, however, Phil, I'm telling you right now, you cannot be the chairperson of the school and run the schools, and also run the facilities and fix all of those projects, as much as you uh, try to do those things, I want to make sure that your focus is able to be um, on the school program, and we will work to find the right answer for the school facilities and how to move ahead with that. Um, but I think that's very important for us to recognize, this is a much bigger task, a much bigger lift um, than uh, uh, we had necessarily planned for, so, um, we will be looking at this going forward, um, and expect that on future agendas for this committee. Okay, next on the um, agenda is communications. Go ahead, Phil.
Yep, so there were uh, two communications. Uh, there was one, I believe it was yesterday from Richard Maloney, was a letter, you should have received that in your email, um, and that was uh, about SBC business and, and moving forward with projects. Uh, and then there was a, a second email that was sent today, um, by Vanessa Wade. I, I forwarded that to you, um, a letter from her, and basically in support of the, the food services program, uh, and, and part of that was uh, kind of what Brianna was talking about before is, the, the graphic at the bottom on the last slide is the, the lunch lady superhero. Um, and you know, they're, they are an integral part of our, our um, school system. Um, and so, you know, her letter basically gets to that, and, and, uh, so thanks for, for their communications. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, then let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Yep, so I apologize, something happened with formatting when we sent the agenda, so there's preparing students for region nineteen. Um, this B should be staffing, and then C should be school building committee, uh, slash CIP, so I'm not sure what happened from here to um, in technology world, but there's three items there.
The text is all there, it's just formatted on it, so we can move ahead on those items without
So, the, the preparing students for region nineteen, um, as you know, the regional superintendents, we've all been working together. Um, and really to improve collaboration and coordination, because we're all feeder schools to E O Smith. Um, and as part of that process, I, I had a meeting with our eighth grade team, um, HMS principal, the E O Smith principal, and an E O's, uh, E O Smith counselor. Um, and we were looking at data to review the appropriateness of student placement. Um, and so when we place eighth grade students into classes for their freshman year, we wanted to know how we were doing. Um, and so we were looking at the twenty-two, twenty-three freshmen, um, and I can tell you that our placement was very accurate, which is really, is good. Um, and number two, that our students are doing well, and so basically the data that we looked at um, was twofold. We looked at a scatter plot that was semester one grades, um, and we looked at all towns, but we could filter it down to Wellington, and that's what we discussed. Um, and so where students were scoring on their PSAT, um, as, and was, and also their, their first semester grades, so English, math, science, social studies data um, were in line with other towns, and so when we start talking about preparation, um, and where our students are compared to others, we are right where um, the others are, which is really good to see. Um, the other thing we reviewed was uh, some data for graduating seniors from June of twenty twenty-two. Um, and this was interesting to me, because it's the first time I've seen this. We've talked about this in the future, uh, and hopefully we can keep this going in the future, and this is again, all part of the collaborative that we're part of. Um, eighty-two percent of Wellington students are moving on um, to post-high school education, so eighty-two percent of our, our, our kids are going on to some sort of education after high school. Twelve percent were moving directly into the workforce. Um, and then we had six percent of students that were in what we'll call an other category. That could be military, it could be a fifth year of high school. Uh, it could be a gap year, it could be that they don't have a plan, um, and we were talking about uh, six percent. It's a very small number for us, especially when we're only talking about thirty-four kids, I think, for this current, for that group. Um, I will tell you again, Wellington students were in the same percentage range as other towns, so, uh, you know, Mansfield, Ashford, Wellington. Uh, you could even add in Columbia in there. Our students, um, were basically in the same ballpark as others. You know, they were pretty much in the eighties, eighty percent of students going on into something that was um, post-high school um, education, and so that's, it was nice to hear that. Uh, we will continue working um, with the region. Um, we, we thought that placement was really important, because um, sometimes when students are placed as, in, into high school as a freshman, their classes can dictate what they're eligible for um, in four years, and so we want to get that right, because sometimes you get on a track, and so it's really important for us to get the, you know, get that right, and um, and that it's also aligned with the other districts, so. We've, we've done well with that, which is great, and I, you know, shout out to E O Smith for wanting to do this work uh, and meeting with us, because they've heard us, and we've asked this question before about preparation, about how we're comparing with other towns, and, and uh, we like the data that we saw. Um, and we are definitely in, in the game with these other towns, so that's a good thing. Um, the second item was staffing. We only had uh, one opening for a paraprofessional, and we hired Sarah LaZandorfer. Um, she's going to be paraprofessional at Hall School, um, so welcome to her. And then the last thing, um, that was on my superintendent report was the school building committee CIP update, and, and Michelle kind of, I'm gonna re, you know, you kind of share the same thing that, that she just said. Um, I started working on the updating the CIP plan I re, already. I've never done it this early. Um, I'm already looking at what we will um, send to the committee in December of twenty twenty-three. Uh, I'll tell you that just my updates, uh, so far, there's two different um, tabs now as opposed to one, uh, and right now, just with uh, some quick work from the get-go, we're, we're probably at thirty-five projects, um, per building. Um, and so there's a lot to it. Um, and I think what's important here is, in a, in a, I know a lot of people have said, jump on the roofs, jump on the roofs. Um, we need to be really thoughtful about the order that these things go in, because I'll just tell you, um, from Michelle's example, the ventilation, the, anything to do with, uh, you know, cooling, the painting of the HMS library, uh, any of those things, uh, you know, replacement of the roof, solar panels. All of those things uh, need to go in a certain order and be done properly, so that you're not impacting a warranty on a roof material. Um, and um, that you're not disrupting something you've already done, so that's really important, and uh, many of those roof items are uh, grant eligible, so solar panels are. Um, there's a ventilation grant out right now that um, we have to determine if we're eligible for or not. Um, you know, the roof would, would get grant funds. Um, again, the bottom line is these things have to be coordinated. Um, and the majority of the items that are on the list right now are, it's summer work. Um, and if it's not summer work and some other things are gonna move forward, um, we'll have to find uh, other spaces for students, particularly at Center School where we are uh, super, super tight. Um, that is the, the harder of the two buildings for certain. Um, whereas Hall School, we might have some, some more flexibility, so again, um, you know, the, the idea that uh, these would be done in summer months, and they're gonna take, it's gonna take some planning, we have to have some expertise on recommendations for moving forward. Um, and I'm hoping that the selectmen uh, put in a request to ARPA. Um, that was approved to do a townwide facility study. Um, and the hope is that, and I know the RFP is not out yet, I don't believe, that they're trying to write into that, that we will get um, kind of a prioritized list with costs. Um, typically, they're done just by square footage, but if they can come out and look at things, they can do, do a little more, um, provide some more accurate numbers, and so hopefully that will be part of the process, because obviously the two thousand seventeen fire report at this point, um, even though we escalated those numbers as part of the SBC process, they're, they're still outdated, so um, looking forward to that process, and hopefully we can get those numbers in. Um, we'll talk more about end of the year money further down the agenda, but Michelle, I don't know if you want to open up for comments about what I just shared, or if that was my last thing on my superintendent's report.
Those are usually topics that are more for our information, and we're not actually discussing for a vote right now.
Correct.
So, we have a couple of other things, since we did not meet last month. I want to keep us moving through this, but know that uh, you all, we can ask questions again, um, either after the meeting or at the end of the meeting too. So, I want to jump to, uh, next on the agenda is our financial report.
Okay, so you can see the current status of the budget. You, you received this. Um, and again, we'll be discussing end of the year uh, purchases later in the meeting. At this point, what I just want to share in the, from the bottom line of what you're looking at of what's left. Um, we're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're gonna ask of this funds to be put back into the non-lapsing fund, that is uh, not included in this number, so the one fifty would be taken from this. Um, and again, that would be uh, to maximize uh, your non-lapsing account, because you're applying a hundred and fifty thousand in your twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, the other thing is that uh, we did share with the Board of Finance that we expect that we would share a minimum of a hundred, uh, return a hundred, a minimum of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's, whoops, we got some crazy thing going on there. We've got a, uh, uh, about three hundred and seventy-five thousand, oh, sorry, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, that was gonna come off that number really from um, the get-go. It may be more that we return. Um, but the, the kind of verbal guarantee pending any uh, crisis was that we would return a minimum of one twenty-five, plus the one fifty, um, that would come back, and they, they assured that would be the request. Um, just a, a quick rundown of the programs, um, we still have a, um, the title grant is still not applied, so when you see this forty-four, six ninety, this amount is come, going to come back into this budget, so it's not necessarily a negative right now, it's just that it hasn't been applied yet. Um, the same thing goes into HMS, uh, that title grant sixteen thousand will go in. Um, so they have funds, and the funds that are there really are, were because of openings and your adjustment in the Spanish position, the world language position. Uh, we're gonna see about a hundred and eight thousand here, plus the twenty-eight thousand that we'll see in May, will come back from excess cost. So that'll go on top of this. Um, I anticipate just with, with some of the numbers and grants and things from special ed, that we probably are gonna be able to return, um, take that one fifty, the request for the one hundred and fifty thousand to non-lapsing, probably straight from special ed. Um, so, uh, transportation will, I don't anticipate to be in the negative at the end of the year, and that's simply because we're waiting on that diesel reimbursement. Um, health services I anticipate will be down to zero, uh, curriculum staff, they'll all the same thing. Um, utilities will, will not change much, because it's typically uh, fully encumbered at this point. Um, and then the uh, operations and maintenance, what I'm gonna tell you is that this is the one program I'm anticipating uh, that's gonna be in the negative, that you'll probably have to move some money back into this program at the end of the year. Um, we did have some overages, you gave the five thousand dollars for plumbing, for each building. Uh, and as we expected, I think it was Tracy that said this, a five thousand dollar project can quickly turn into ten thousand, uh, and it did. Um, and not that much, but it went over, and so, um, they are completing their priority plumbing projects, uh, and uh, I use budget money to balance the rest of it. Um, we still have some things that will have come up, uh, through, through our preventative maintenance contract with EMCOR. They've identified uh, something that with our HMS boiler, we're gonna continue to fix those things as they come up, um, which is exactly what we've been doing, so. That program will probably need some money transferred in, in at the end of the year. Um, I anticipate system-wide support's gonna come down, and the big money this year was the fringe. Um, this is where the majority of your uh, budget is, and it's simply because when we budgeted the people that we had, we used our exact staff, those, the staff that left and the staff that came in, um, waived insurance, they didn't take it, so there's significant savings here uh, in, in that fringe, and so that's really what we'll talk about for end of the year funds. Um, really coming out of that, that dollar now.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Yeah.
Are there questions from the board? If you can uh, raise your hand, or let me know if you have a specific question on this report. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of our regular meeting minutes from February fourteenth. Folks had a chance to take a look at those. I'll take a motion off the floor. Okay, assuming if we're just hesitating and I'm not frozen.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the, what was it, February?
February fourteenth.
February fourteen, Valentine's Day meeting.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We've got three seconds. I, I think I saw your hand first, Dan. Um, were there any additions or changes or comments on those? Go ahead, Laura.
I had one, under D, school building committee update. I think it says Superintendent Stevens discussed that the committee is recommending sending a new school on a new site. I think it should be building a new school on a new site.
Yep, that's it.
That's all, just.
Otherwise, we're missing what's being sent, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
It might have been sending to referendum, that might be what that is.
Yeah, okay, you're missing the noun of what's being sent to our, uh, building, but, okay.
That's, that's all I saw. That's that's all I saw.
Okay, um so are you proposing that um we make that that note to the minute? But you're not, you're not changing your motion.
No, I'm not changing the motion.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes from February fourteenth uh signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, then we're gonna do a roll call vote for the minutes, and I'm just gonna go through in the order that I see you all on my screen. Tracy Anderson?
Aye.
Anne Grosjean? Um Anne, you have to come off mute. I did see your hand, but it.
Aye.
Thank you, Brianna Ross.
Aye.
Laura Rodriguez.
Aye.
Donna Cook.
Abstain.
Herb Erico. And Michelle Dusak Cunningham is aye. Okay, so motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is our healthy food certification, which we do every year.
Yep, so this is uh this is this thing that's done every year. It's it's uh I'm gonna request that you can do three motions here. I need at least two. Um the first two are probably the most important. Um and I'm gonna uh obviously request that you pass them. Um this is the one uh that you do have to turn into uh a motion and you do have to read that whole thing. The second motion is around serving food of uh outside, you know, things in school, and the third one is about beverages. So I'm not sure if the third one went to you. But what I'll tell you is it's gonna be on my screen if you want me just to to make it easy for you. Now, these are part of the National School Lunch Program, uh things that we have to do. And it's required minutes, and this is exactly how it goes. So that required vote for participation, healthy food option for um the National School Lunch Program.
Bill, why don't we have someone read read the first one to make the motion? We can have any discussion and then we'll go through it that way.
Perfect.
Okay. So. So do I say I make a motion and then read it?
You can just say I moved to move that pursuant to C G S.
Okay, all right, I move that pursuant to C G S section ten dash twenty-one, five F. The Wellington Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities.
Thank you, Laura. Do I have a second?
Basically Anderson, I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have one question. I have one question.
Herb, you've got, we've got a a echo. Can you turn off the um mute the sound on your computer? Or give it a try? I don't want to mess up your audio, but oh, now we can't hear you at all. If you mute, if you mute the try it and we'll see how bad it is.
I muted myself.
Okay, there's a little echo, but we can stand it, I think. Go ahead.
On the uh motion. After fundraising activities. It doesn't comply with the motion from the state. There's another statement on on school premises sponsored by the school or non-organizations and groups. That was left off.
So, good catch. I was reading the one that is at the end of our agenda and looking on my other screen.
Um so will you accept a friendly emotion?
Absolutely.
Okay, will you say it out loud for the record then, please, just so that it goes with you?
Okay, so the friendly amendment is to add on after fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Okay, thank you. Thanks Herb for your attention to detail on that. Additional questions? Comments? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye or raising your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Donna and Herb, since you're off screen, can you um just? Donna was an aye and Herb?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. We'll move ahead to the next one. Go ahead, Laura. You want to read the next one?
Sure, and I checked my other screen, which is bigger. It's easier for me to read off of, and it goes all the way to food sales, so I think I'm good. So I I move that the Wellington Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events. But soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
Thank you, Laura. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Anne. Questions and comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in support of the motion signify by saying aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Herb?
Abstain.
Okay, then we're gonna do a roll call vote, um and you've changed order on my screen, so I'm gonna do this uh in the order you are now. Laura Rodriguez?
Aye.
Tracy Anderson?
Aye.
Anne Grosjean?
Aye.
Brianna Ross?
Aye.
Donna Cook?
Aye.
Herb Erico?
Abstain.
And Michelle Cunningham, aye. Okay, so the motion passes. Okay, now this one, we're gonna read off of the screen because it's not on our other one. Laura, you feel like you like going again?
I can do it. I can do it. All right. So I move the, oh, see, now I've got to actually insert things here. I move the Wellington Board of Education will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in section ten dash two twenty-one Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. The school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the beverage sales.
Thank you, Laura. Do I have a second? Okay, Herb, I heard you next.
Yes.
Thank you. Um are there questions or discussion? Uh Donna, I see your hand. Do you want to come off mute?
I I just want to make sure I'm clear. Are are we talking about like at a play or something like that, that they sell soda?
Or dance?
All right. So, and this is stuff that's only designed to be sold to students, so anything that would be considered an adult beverage would not be permitted on purpose.
That's an excellent question. It's an excellent question. I'm sure our insurance agency prohibits that. No matter what we do, any time of day, not just from midnight to thirty minutes after the school, so you are correct. Um whether they're free or sold, I'm sure they are prohibited, so we're good for that. Additional questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Uh abstentions? Nay? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, thank you for reading all of those, Laura. That is the most riveting part of our work all year long, and you did just fine. Thank you for that. Thank you, Herb, for your attention to detail and making sure that we got that right, because that's something that we have to do verbatim. Next on the agenda is end of year purchasing.
Yep, so this is uh your first kind of glimpse into uh my thought, my admin team's thought. Um getting some feedback from staff, obviously maintenance folks are involved in this as well. Um and teachers, um and trying to come up with some uh items that uh you know, it would we have money at the end of the year uh to be able to to do some some specific things with it. Um these funds really need, they need to be encumbered by the end of June. Um and so this is not a project where you can, you know, encumber funds in June and then do the project in September. It doesn't work that way. And so really, the 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 money that we have in this budget year, those those items um really should be completed by the end of June. Um if it's slightly over, I think the auditors are okay with it, but um we want to make sure it's in this fiscal year. So I'm gonna show you um a draft list of things that we've come up with that's a balance of kind of some of the things that are bigger picture. Sorry, I have to move you guys down here. Um and so just to share, so the chimney repair is new, um and these are, some of these have quotes for, and some of them, they're uh they're approximates. Um we have on the chimney at Center School a a a few options, the um brick, uh you know, it's the repointing, it's the any of the thing, you know, the what's holding the the chimney together. When it rains sideways, we're getting some moisture in in into the chimney, and so we've been giving given a couple options. One is to lower the chimney. We're not sure if the building official would would approve that or not. Um the second option was just a full repair of that chimney. Um so there's an approximate cost of thirty thousand dollars uh on that um on that item. Um and 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 by the way, there's i- if you're looking at, you know, the total number of projects here um and what we have listed, it's it's about two hundred thousand dollars um that I believe we have, and this is this is uh over that amount. This is more like two sixty. So the second thing, and it's for both schools, having some outdoor thermoplastic seating, just it's those picnic tables with kind of that rubberized top. And looking to add those for some outside spaces for learning um to sit at if somebody wants to sit down at recess, if somebody uh staff member wants to eat outside for lunch. Uh just trying to put some tables in. The library furniture at Center School, uh if you've ever sat in those small chairs, um number one and number two, the awkward tables that we have. This is a ballpark with the library furniture that was ordered for Hall was more than twenty thousand dollars last year. But this is something that would replace those tables and chairs um at at Center School. You have classroom rugs and classroom rugs are not the carpet. These are like the picture of the elementary rugs that sit on top of the carpet that are things like have the numbers and colors and spaces on them to the spots to sit. Um this is something that uh instead of putting, which I know how much the the custodians really hate, um sticking things to the actual carpet um in the room, um which then when you peel them up and you try and wash the floor uh doesn't leave good marks, and so um replacing some of those classroom rugs that uh are out there. They're about six hundred dollars each, um and that's per room. Looking at, and this is something that years ago was taken off C I P was computers uh painting in 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 um carpeting rooms. And so there's no replacement right now. It's just we we do it when we can, um and so replacing the carpet in in a a total classroom is about twenty-seven hundred dollars. Again, it's an approximate. Uh and this number is really for Center School is only downstairs because if there's any room, um and there are some classrooms with um asbestos. If you're gonna peel up that rug, you also have to peel up the tile, which means it's not twenty-seven hundred dollars. It's more than that. So at this point in time, for what I'm proposing to you because of timing, uh you don't have time to do an asbestos removal project. Um so this would be really the lower wing of Center School. Um and you could do as few or as many rooms as it is you want, uh and I could give you a number about, you know, that need it. I've shown you the the window replacement in the C I P thing. Those are the fogged windows. Again, this would be basically the lower wing. The upper wing would not be part of this process, uh and this is not a reimbursable project. It's basically just replacing the glass. It's not replacing any of the framing. Uh it's it's they could recaulk the windows for us, but it would just be um if you've ever seen the seal of the glass um break where it gets foggy and cloudy inside, that's what this would be replacing. Those are typically, I think, a thousand dollars each. We've done it. Um we've done some of them as we if they've come up. Um but it's not been a huge priority. Some of the classroom furniture, we talked about twenty-first century learning. Didn't put a price tag on it. You know, you could you could go crazy on some of these desks and chairs, or or you could be a little more um reasonable, so it depends on uh really uh the administrators and the staff and what we're looking to do, and uh again, to balance twenty-first need, twenty-first century needs. And what am I talking about? I'm talking about movable desks, things like that on wheels, to make groups quickly, to make islands, um to, you know, just quick flexible rooms. Um classroom painting, again, those are things that we typically try and do ourselves. Um when we empty the rooms and we clean them in the summertime. Uh I talked to Matt Jensen and he said, I think we've had one room professionally painted in nine years. They've done the rest. The challenge of them doing that is uh it is time. Um because it takes them a lot of time to do those things as opposed to, um you know, when they're trying to clean things in the summertime. We could do this in those two weeks, uh really from the time classes are out on June fifteenth. We could book it so that we could paint some classrooms and try and do this, uh get a schedule each year. And the last thing, and again, honestly, I don't even know if it's feasible. It, I went through the C I P plan and and the list of things of what would be reasonable in that timeframe is that um gym A C. The heating unit that we did years ago, uh several years ago was uh um we bought a unit that was prepped so that we could connect it to A C. Um and that's something that we we could do. Um the this is uh it was twenty or four or twenty-six thousand. I bumped it up to thirty. The big question will be, i- if you're interested interested in this, um I would need to find out if they can even get these parts, um get, you know, to to make it happen or not. Uh because we know that there's there's been a crunch on some of these um ordering some of these items. Uh just as I shared about the the fire panels, um we're hoping that that's gonna be a summer project. But it depends on parts. For H M S, uh they did some security cameras last year. They gave me kind of the the bare minimum, um and so things like stairwells and things like that are not. Um maybe I shouldn't say that for for students, but uh stairwells are not covered by cameras. Um and so we have a recommendation, uh this is where Center School has already been taken care of. Hall School, we need a second round of cameras to be approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars to cover what they ha- have requested uh to be to to be covered, and and that was done with a professional to uh identify where. Um again, you see the outdoor thermoplastic seating that's there. Um there's a request in right now for iPads for Unified Arts. Um and that's really uh just thinking about, I've been working with um one part is the music department, uh trying to use things like GarageBand, which is much easier on an iPad. Since we've gone to Chrome, um they're trying some solutions on Google. Um this would also help them balance out uh some of the pro- project-based learning work that they're doing to be able to have those Chromebooks just for them, because we're one-to-one Chromebooks, not iPads. So these would really be for Unified Arts um for H M S. Um there's a request for white whiteboard replacement. We've been frugal with our whiteboards and um we have purchased some really cheap. I'm not even sure if it's whiteboard material or what it is. It's you can go to get a sheet of it for home at Home Depot for thirty or forty bucks. Um but it doesn't erase as well. Um and so there's a need to replace some of the whiteboards at Hall School. Again, not budgeted, not a ton of money, but uh important. Uh you've got the carpet replacement again. And again, would be the same thing, couldn't be in a space where there was asbestos tile. Um you've got the same window replacement thing. I know some of those science labs have those fogged windows. Uh classroom painting again, uh and classroom furniture, so this is a kind of a balance of educational and um building projects that could be done in a very quick time period. And that we could get the materials for, um so Michelle, I don't know if you want to open it up? Michelle, I don't know if you want to open it up to to kind of prioritizing this or um. What your thoughts are, I I did some. Just to give you a ballpark, I did, i- it's about two hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars in my ballpark for all of these items. Some may come in higher, some may come in lower, just depending on uh.
Right, so in terms of process, um we don't have to vote on this tonight to move this ahead, this is more to help you prioritize. Your time and where you're going to get quotes from before you bring back to us for a vote.
Correct.
Uh probably actually next month and again in June, it's not a one-time process, this is the, as we're moving ahead, am I correct?
Yeah, some of the materials like iPads, we can turn around pretty quick. Um but you know, if you wanna, and same thing probably with whiteboards. Um but we would want to, you know, if your priority, if you you say, hey, listen, we would really like to do a couple of rooms for for carpeting and painting. Um I want to make sure we have those people booked and encumber those funds, some of the bigger things like the chimney repair need i- is, you know. We would have to get uh multiple quotes, we have one right now, um and that's where that number's coming from. Um thermoplastic seating is easy, that's like, uh you know, you can go to four or five different places and have it in a couple of weeks. It's really the materials, if you want to move forward, try and move forward with the gym A C. I need to make some phone calls tomorrow.
Right, because the likelihood of us being able to get the A C that hooks up into the heating unit we have, um I suppose is a. Uh we want to be in line for that, that's the thing we want. Um so um at this point, since we are not. Absolutely moving ahead with anything, if anybody has a preference or wants to um express a priority that they have. Um this would be the time to do it, and Anne, I see your hand up first.
Um Michelle, I have a question, I have two questions, um. Number one, if we're not able to hook into the gym heating system. Would splits work for something like that?
It you 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 could use a split in that room, but we should be able to have no problem hooking into it, it's just a matter of time.
Okay.
Could we get it in time to have an install and really the last two weeks of. Of, you know, the the month of June.
Okay, very good.
Remember that while we can encumber the funds, we have to spend them and we've got a little window, maybe a week or two for things to get delivered. But there's not a lot of time left to make it happen in this fiscal year.
Correct.
My second question is, when you were talking about the windows. Um I I'm guessing that over time, we may need to replace windows. Um if in fact, we're going to repair the two buildings and try to get them up to. Um you know, get them at least up meeting code and all, um with. Would it uh would it be better to wait till we just replace the windows, or is it worthwhile to do that now and?
No, i- i- the these are windows that, so these are not single pane, these are the same windows that you would maintain. Um you can, the good thing about this is you don't have to change the frame out. Um unless something's rotting around a frame, which we don't have, or or.
Okay.
Um that's not the case, this is just literally they take the glass out. Um put new glass in, seal it uh and caulk around the frames. Um whereas if this were the upper wing of Center School, where it's single pane, very, very different job.
Okay, that we would want the new windows for, yeah.
Yeah, that's everything.
One more question, um reimbursable, is any of this reimbursable? No, okay.
No. Let me just, before I say that.
I think, Anne, the general rule of thumb, if it's meant for regular repair, the state expects you to continue to repair.
The only one that might be reimbursable, Anne, is is I'm looking at a security grant right now, um that came out in the last, uh I don't know, a couple of weeks, whatever it's been. Um they did another round of security uh items, uh that might be eligible. Um and usually that's, sometimes it's matching, sometimes it's your reimbursement rate. Um so that's that's, it's literally up on my ca- my my computer for for reading, so I need to see if if that's a direction you want to go with those cameras. It's something that, again, I would jump right on and and look to see if we could do that.
That would be a great one to jump on, so passing it on to who's next, thank you.
Sorry, I I want to add one of the comments to that, I just don't know about timing.
Oh.
So if they would allow us to do it, pay for it, and then a- apply and and you might not get your money back, I just want to tell you that. If you if you got the grant, great, some of that money would then come back into the general fund for the town, but if you did, you didn't.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Brianna, go ahead. No, okay, that was a hands up, okay.
Um I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Herb.
Uh I'll fill. On the list. We have. Uh quite a few repairs, which I which I believe are necessary and I'm. And uh I know you worked hard on putting it together. The only two items that seem to directly impact. Students. If I remember, it was the uh whiteboard. And some computers. For the arts. But I don't see anything else there that is. Directly impacting. The uh educational. Aspects of our programs. Now, is that something that that you're going to develop? Down the road. For example, we mentioned the purchase of of books, materials of that kind.
Go ahead, Phil.
I've already done it, Herb, I I think I placed about fifteen thousand dollars worth of books.
Right, so some of those are easier, we don't have to worry about getting access to those, like we do air conditioner parts, um and some of those have already been purchased. Um and there may be additional ones that come to us as well, this is more.
It's not on the list.
It's already taken care of, it's already done.
It's okay to say it's being done.
Yeah.
But I I want to see it for a fact.
No, it's it's already, it's like completed already. Um so once I heard the support from the board, I think it was in February. Um they developed list for to to support classroom libraries. Um and they had money in their in their supply lines. Uh and and I'm not kidding, I think I approved fifteen thousand dollars for the books between Center and Hall School, and that's for the the their. Main libraries, but also their classroom libraries and things that are directly tied to. Um the curriculum, uh and I'm I'm glad to to send that to the board separately. Uh I I have it on, I think it's on a spreadsheet, that I I mean, I think we spent. Uh three or four thousand dollars on on decodable books for the elementary school. Um there was, we spent a lot of money on books, here comes Erin, because she's going to go, yes, we did. Um uh and uh I think if there's uh more requests for books, I I. Would do it and don't need, it's it's not, I don't see that as an additional thing that the board needs to. Um jump in on, it's it's because I can just do it within the current budget. Whereas opposed to, uh and it's something that we've budgeted for, if I spend a little bit more on something that we budgeted for. Um it it balances out in the grand scheme of things, whereas we didn't budget for the items that I put in front of you, I didn't budget for. iPads, I didn't budget for classroom furniture, and so you're right, Herb, the majority of these things, um. The things that I would say probably impact education, um the iPads for sure. Um the whiteboards to, you know, are probably a little indirect, and so is the classroom furniture indirect. Um because those are things that, you know, are not necessarily directly tied to curriculum. Um but the those would be the things I think that would be on this list, whereas the others. Um unless you're trying to look out a fogged window at birdhouses and it's part of your studies, they, you can't see the birdhouse. Majority of these other things are kind of uh building meetings kind of items.
Okay, Donna, I think your hand was up next.
Yes, um question, couple of things, Phil, could you just pop that list back up?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, um when I look at the list, something like the chimney repair. I would put at the top, because if you're telling me we're getting a water leak when it rains certain ways. That's could have caused so many other problems if that's not taken care of. Um so something like that, and 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 maybe even the security cameras. I would put at the top of the list, some of the other things, um I think it's hard. To consider them, um you know, what what would be a priority? Just because it's piecemeal instead of a big picture. I'd love to see a big picture thing, so we can say, okay, it makes more sense to. Do the painting, or it more makes more sense to do rugs, or um. Maybe not do new furniture for all the classrooms, but um. Assess what, you know, even to to test it out, maybe do something with an older grade or a younger grade. To see if it works before we go all in.
Yeah, Donna, that's a a great point, and I probably should have said that, that the the classroom furniture number that I'm looking at is absolutely not classroom furniture for the entire school. Um that could be a hundred thousand dollars per building, the classroom furniture that's in that I would put in here is about twenty thousand dollars. Um and that would be kind of the test furniture, you do a couple of rooms, depending on, again, what you're ordering, some of these desks are. You know, a hundred dollars, you know, each, and some of the desks are six hundred dollars each, it just depends on what. You're purchasing, but that doesn't cover everything, that's a very, very good point, sorry.
Yeah, and 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 I would say that if you're looking at a six hundred dollar desk. For an elementary school, that maybe that's not the wisest use of money.
Yeah, it so.
Seems like put like, you know, like you don't give fine china to the toddler.
On the other hand, you do want something spurtier for the elementary school kid.
It 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 may not be worth it after the toddler is done with it. Um and it may not be able to be passed on to another kid, so I would say any anything that is going to. Make the environment safer, such as the chimney repair. Um the security cameras, um that those would be be. Something that you could do, not necessarily having a big picture, when it comes to um replacing carpets. Or um furniture in that, I I feel more comfortable seeing, well, what's the plan? Um and what makes sense, as far as um having the rooms painted. It would be helpful to know if. We hired an outside company and they come in and they can paint, you know. Four classrooms in a day, get it done, um in that way, how that, what that cost is compared to. The cost of the paint and all the supplies, plus the staff wages for that period of time when they can't be doing another job. So it's hard to say whether it's worth having the staff do the painting, or if it makes more sense to have. Somebody else come in and do the painting so that the staff can be doing something else, it may actually be. More efficient and less costly, but without. Um the particulars, it makes it difficult to even hedge in the in a direction. Um and as far as the. Outdoor seating goes, um I'm thinking that. Four tables per school, like is there a reason we need four picnic ta- tables? At each school, or would two at each school do the job, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure, it just. Um I did a quick look at school outfitters, um. And they have picnic tables for a lot less than two thousand dollars, but of course, when you're looking online, it's difficult to tell. Um the size and the quality, and we obviously don't want to get something that you're going to have to replace after a season. Um.
They get you on shipping, Donna.
For 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 heavy picnic tables, for sure. Um.
You know what, I think we have some pickup trucks in town, maybe they can be picked, I don't know where they're located.
It's gonna say, it depends on if they're coming from Michigan, right?
Um yeah, you know, like where you could pick stuff up, but but I I just pulled a, you know, pulled something on, but um I know Sam's Club. Has some pretty decent deals on some heavy duty stuff and um. And that way, and that's not that far away, so anyway, that's just different things to look into, thank you.
Okay, Brianna, your hand is up.
Can I just respond, Michelle?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay, so Donna, I just want to comment to the painting thing, the the big thing for us is the amount of time and the number of rooms that we can do in a summer. Um so if I ask them to paint, you know, two rooms, I'm probably going to lose something else, um. You know, because they also get vacation time, and I've got subs coming in to do those things, so that's the challenge of you never keep up with. Um and I'm smiling because it's it's, this has been the 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 e- e- ever, you know. You know, the same problem we hear about over and over is that, you know, you've got, you know, twenty classrooms, well, if you are only painting it. One or two every summer, you're just not keeping up, so. Um that's one of the challenges, and and it doesn't mean that they might not paint a a a classroom, it just means that we could do more in one year. Uh and and then the other thing is the the desks, I agree with you, we don't need the Ferrari. Um some of the things, the features that come on the desks that add money. Um if it's got a basket on the chair, if it's um. The the type of material, so if it's got a a a whiteboard top, so kids can write directly on it, and you don't, you're not replacing whiteboards. Things like that, there's all sorts of different things, casters add. Uh forty-five to sixty dollars per desk sometimes, so you can wheel them around the room, so. It's things like that that add up the price, but some of the things that they have for features are are a little excessive, you know. The fabric slides off the back, so there's there's cushions, fabric slides off the back, so you can hang uh put books in there. Um that's where you get to the higher-end desk, but.
Oh, okay, so.
You need all that stuff.
So a couple of things, one, so is that thirty five hundred dollars? To hire somebody to come in and paint a number of classrooms, or is that thirty five hundred dollars per one classroom?
It's a, it's about a square footage price, um and that's where that number came from, so about a nine hundred square foot price right now. Is estimated to be in that thirty five hundred dollar range, some of them could be a little bit higher, and some of them could be lower. Um but based upon the the painting calculator for that square footage with, you know, primer, a couple coats of paint. Um that's about the number.
Okay, and does that include the person um doing the painting, moving all the furniture to the middle of the room, or is that the?
We do that, we empty the rooms for them, they're just coming in, they're doing all the prep work, they're painting all the trim, um they're doing two coats of paint. Um they're doing all the cleanup, all, you know, any of that stuff, and then we put the room back together, because when it's empty, that's where, when we clean, we do the rugs. Wash the furniture, things like that.
And and as far as, you know, back in the dinosaur ages, as students, we moved our own desks, even when we were in first grade.
Yeah, not anymore.
Why can't they move their desks?
Someone gets injured.
So it's a lost thing, not not that our students are incapable of moving.
Absolutely, yeah. They can, we have, you know, students slide their desks to the sides and things like that, but on a on a regular basis, it's not a practice you want to take part in.
How often do teachers need students to need the furniture moved?
Uh right now, not a lot, because it's hard to do, if you have the ability to do that, you're going to use it a lot more. So if you have something on casters and you can adjust groups quickly, you use it, if you don't have the ability, you're not planning for those things.
And then what do they do about locking them so that they don't go flying when, like, are there locks on them?
Typically, there's like those lock things that lock the wheels down, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Brianna.
Hi, um I just wanted to ask about carpet replacement, why not tile over tile?
We could, it could be, um some of it is is acoustics and it. It's something that we could consider, when we had the flood, we talked about. Um what to put back down, and actually, I think tile was more expensive.
Yeah, I was wondering that.
Yeah, it's something that we consider, I mean, uh the things that are challenging Brianna is. Uh waxing is actually a uh. Highly risky thing, uh there's claims every year for people falling when they're waxing floors. Um if you were going to do a an alternate surface, I would try and do some service, like I think it was, was it Birch Grove that we saw? Um it might have been Mansfield, I can't remember, some sort of surface that just can be washed, it does not embuff, it it doesn't. You don't have any wax, it's waxless, um and it's not tile-based, if you know what I mean.
Right, I just think for ease of cleaning, something like that would make a lot more sense, and I wonder. If it would be better, um I don't know how you decide that, asking your staff or deciding as a group what to. If it would be better, um, I don't know how you decide that, asking your staff or deciding as a group what to do there, but. Replacing a whole classroom full of carpet to me seems like. Not the best choice. I think tile or something like that would be better, and then use the rugs.
Coming from a preschool teacher, those rooms tend to be tile. Yeah, right. And so the the lower levels, sometimes they have the mix. There's a portion of tile. And a portion of carpet. So that's something that we could definitely consider. Um, it's just a matter of, you know. Having some consistency and making sure that there's funds for it. That's the biggest thing.
Yeah, cost would be interesting to compare, I guess.
Anne, I saw your hand go up.
Um, yes, Phil, this isn't on the list, but we kind of got started with the plumbing. Um, I'm wondering if if we gave the money to the Board of Finance and then asked the money. If we could have it back to continue on with our plumbing.
There's there's twenty thousand in in for each building in CIP in the budget. Just for plumbing, so that work will continue. If it goes beyond that. That's something that you you know, you can come back to your non-lapsing. Um, for, and I'll tell you that this week, there's a lot of plumbing things going on right now. There were plumbers at both buildings today.
Uh huh. Okay, just so we, that's that to me is a safety thing. So I think if we could keep that moving forward, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, and the thing I'll tell you is, and this is part of the conversation, um. That we've been having, um, and whether people want to hear it or not, uh, there was a. A plumber at Center School today working on one project and uh, Tracy again, um, the issue was in the wall. And their estimate was gonna be ten thousand dollars for one toilet. Just to open up the wall to repair the the pipes and to repair the stands, and we're talking about one toilet. Um, and so, and they said, we won't touch this. We're not doing it. Um, because they know it can just move into something else. Um, and so. Uh, those are the challenges that we face right now. It's not simply just. Replacing the toilet, it's the the plumbing that we can see in the classrooms. Those are, those are a little bit easier. If it's behind a wall. It goes up really fast.
And there's no reimbursement. Yeah, okay, thank you, Phil.
Yep.
Um, what I did not hear from anyone was anything about the air conditioning in the gym. Since that's something where there is a need for parts, is that any? On anybody's priority list, that that's something, I know we're typically uh, in the other gym for events, but certainly, um. It'll be awfully hot in those spaces, um.
It's at some point.
About it more as it gets hotter. It's not, today's our first warm day.
At some point, we're gonna need to air condition both buildings. Um, but I think right now the gym is a priority, you know, to. With the that the hot weather that we're having now. So I I think that's definitely priority and. And if not, the part, the air conditioner that fits into the existing pump, finding some kind of alternative.
And that would be a separate system anyways, Anne. Even if we move the E C into the future.
I think what you're hearing from us, Phil, is that um, we definitely prioritize things that are at a school program related. For academics, things that are security related, um, and also maintenance of the buildings to prevent any further decay. Um, but in general, um, it what we've done in the past is we've kind of spent down and then we. You know, carpet as many classrooms as we can or paint as many classrooms as we can, as we have some funding left. You know, if it's two classrooms or if it's four classrooms, you know, depends on how much is left. If we can't get the air conditioning unit. That's a whole bunch more classrooms that get painted. So um, I think it's too early for us to, you know, come up with a anything specific, and that wasn't what you were asking for us. But unfortunately, we didn't take anything off of your list.
That's, and I didn't know if you wanted to add anything either. I mean, that was the challenge of this is, um. Uh, so the part of this is if I can get some more information about the chimney repairs, not as worried about that because it's repairs, it's work. And scheduled, I can get the quotes for that. The Jim A C, I can get some more information tomorrow, um, to get some. You know, to try and figure out, number one, are we even dream, is it, are we dreaming, or will will we even have an opportunity to get those parts? Um, it may be one of those weird things that stocked and maybe not. So I can find that out, um, and I had emailed the board about the potential for the fire panels. There may be a need for a special meeting in the future. If there's a special meeting, you could also make the decision to do the the Jimmy C. Um, and I could also sign off if I know that you're interested in that and the part is available. I can sign off the, you know, ahead of time, just to put a deposit down, um. Because it's within, it's really just getting the feedback from you to say you should start moving ahead on some of these things, um. You know.
Uh, Donna, your hand went back up. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Herb. And then Donna.
Yeah, I've been thinking about. Uh, this item for for a long time. And uh, it's it's a security. In this day and age. It would seem to me that this would be a priority item. And as a as a board member, I know we've done some things. To increase the security and protect our students and faculty. But I noticed on the on the list, we're going to put in a couple of cameras. And to me. That's a routine thing that you you do. The entranceways. In my opinion. Probably could be. Improved in some manner. I I know it would be expensive. But what would you have thought on that, Phil?
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely uh, high on my priority list and not, i- it's in the um. It was added to both buildings in into the uh, next year's December twenty-three C I P plan. Um, you might be talking about a quarter million dollars per building, Herb. Um, and you're really talking about fortifying your front entrance, um. You know, Picture Center School where you're buzzing the first set of doors, the second set of doors goes on to a buzzer as well. There are a, you know, a a stronger door. You're putting ballistic glass into those two areas and you're opening a wi- a window up into the office in Center School. With ballistic glass as well. So both of those projects are high on my list. Um, it. Uh, timing wise, uh, to do that work, uh, in the two weeks we have is 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 not gonna happen, but. It's definitely on my list for a future for both buildings. It's something that, um, if we're gonna stay put. That really needs to happen. There needs to be the double vestibule to to go into the buildings. Um, and you need to add the protection for the staff that are, you know, sitting right there in the offices, so.
So you're thinking it'll be implemented. Before four or five years at best?
It's gonna be in my plan, whether it. Where it's placed, I don't know, and what the cost will be, I don't know, but it's not something I. I believe we could do in the last two weeks of of June and uh, not, or have the funding for.
But it is in your plan.
It is.
Okay, Donna, if you want to come off mute.
Yeah, um, so one of the things I didn't see was any additional electrical work. And one of the things you had mentioned was that the classrooms don't have ample outlets. So. Um, I would prioritize. Adding ou- outlets, at least to the older kids' classes, um. And and that way, over maybe some of this other, some of the other things, um, that aren't. Safety, you know, necessary repairs, um, because that'll serve not only the students, but. But the uh, staff and faculty as well.
I'll find out what our system can handle, Donna. I'll get back to you on that. That's that's a good thought.
Okay, so Phil, you think you have enough feedback from us to move ahead?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. This is gonna be a standing item. We will continue to talk about this as we move ahead. Um, next on the agenda is old business. This is the second reading of the phonics curriculum.
Yeah, I didn't receive any questions. I'm not sure, Erin, if you received any, um. So I'm I'm just gonna recommend that the committee has gone through this. I think I'm gonna recommend that you approve the phonics curriculum. Uh, knowing that, you know, it's it's being implemented in that it'll come back with changes as as we move forward.
Someone on the committee want to make a motion and then we'll see if there are any questions. Go ahead, Laura.
Make a motion to approve the phonics curriculum.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'm seconded.
Thank you, Anne. Are there questions or comments or concerns about uh, this? Based on what you've had a chance to look over over the past few months. Go ahead, Donna.
I just, it's more of a comment. Um, you know, we're we're asked to vote on this curriculum. But it's already being implemented. So if we don't like it, we're kind of stuck with it. And, um, it is. Next to impossible to get through it and dig deep enough to actually have a. A comfortable feeling of what's in there, um, so that's just my comment. Thank you.
Anne?
Donna, you gave me the perfect segue. I was debating whether I should say this or not. I have a kindergarten granddaughter who went into kindergarten not knowing her alphabet. Um, she's taking off with reading now. I'm a first grade teacher and my career, part of my career was a first grade teacher. So I can really appreciate good phonics and good reading and all of that, and I'm absolutely amazed with, um. How wonderful this phonics program is, and I've seen it. I've actually seen it, and I have a third grader who's an excellent reader now. And I think that's because he had this great foundation of what they've been doing for the past few years, so. Um, I'm very impressed with it, and I think I think it's it's proven. Um, with my my two grandchildren anyway, so.
Okay, additional questions? Go ahead, Tracy.
Um, I just, uh. Through all, through my experience, what I've heard from about the phonics program is. Amazing results are happening in schools all over the country. And this is based on the science of reading and the the latest evidence-based research. And I ex- I'm really excited that we are putting this into school, and I think you are going. I I imagine the teachers are actually already seeing. A results in Willington in the in the elementary grades. Based on just starting it in the fall. And I'm not sure about the, um, I haven't had experience with what's being used in the middle school. But the science and really, the. Science of reading includes vocabulary and all of the pieces that Aaron and, um. Has been bringing forward to us. I trust the experts, Aaron, the science of reading, what I've been reading. I've been immersed in this stuff all year in training in my own school. I don't think you have, if you went into and looked. It was on the computer that was shared with us. There's a wealth of information there. It's just, the proof is there for me.
Thanks, Tracy. Okay, seeing no further hands, let's move ahead with this since we've already. Um, had a chance to look at it for two months and there weren't any additional questions. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Oh, I'm sorry, Donna. We can go to a roll call vote, should we, Donna?
Is that maximum?
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Um, uh, again, you all keep changing places on my screen. Uh, we're gonna start with Tracy.
Aye.
Brianna?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Donna?
No.
Herb?
Abstain.
Abstain, and I'm an aye. Okay, so the motion passes. Okay, so that is the end of old business. Next on our agenda is President to Speak. We encourage residents from town to uh, speak to the board. For uh, up to three minutes each for a total of twenty minutes. Um, we ask that you start by identifying your name and address. Um, and uh, also, if you want to let us know that you want to speak, you can use the reactions button. There's a raise hand under the reactions button. Or you can come onto the video and raise your hand and we can see you that way. Um, please note that this is a chance for you to um, provide input to the board. It's not a conversation. We're not going to go into great detail. Answering your questions at this point, but know that we do listen to what um, all of you say. And we um, take that seriously and uh, move on for further discussion on those items. So please know that we are listening, even if we don't have. Go on for further discussion afterwards. Uh, Nicole, I saw your hand first and then I saw Jamie. So if you want to come off mute, great.
Hi, Nicole Newcomb, Haincrest Road. I'm here today to bring up some comments regarding the playground at both Center and Hall School. Uh, my daughter made me aware the other day. I'm surprised it just came up now because it's been going on for a long time that. During the winter seasons, if the ground is frozen, they're not allowed to use the playground equipment now. The other day, we've had some really nice days, seventy-degree days, and the kids were still not allowed to use the playground equipment. It's very disheartening for me as a mom. It's sad for the kids' parents that don't take them outside. It really puts our children at a disadvantage socially, emotionally, and gross motor-wise. Um, and I'd really like to see some kind of change about that. I think it's really important for our kids to. Play on the playground, learn from each other, learn how to take turns using slides and equipment such as that. Um. I also couldn't imagine being a teacher, having to tell children that they're not allowed to use the playground. Especially during these beautiful days we've been having. And if it's an issue with litigation, I think we need to find a way. To make our playground safer so that children are able to use it all year long. I think it's a very important part of. Development, so that's what I have to say on that. Um, I do want to give a shout out to our. Gym teacher at Center School. I think he's amazing. He really always goes above and beyond, so I know the kids are at least getting. You know, their energy out through that, but that's not every day. So I just would like to find a way that. We can get the kids on the playground equipment and they're not missing five months out of the year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Jamie, I saw your hand up next.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We sure can. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, Jamie Poprec. I'm at seventy-nine Common Road. Um, when you guys were discussing the items that needed to be done at the school, um, like the painting and stuff like that, I, um. I had an idea pop in my head and it might be um, silly, but. I'm wondering if there's a way that for like some of the smaller jobs such as painting or. If there's ever anything that needs to be done, like painting playground equipment or moving mulch, like. Could there be like a volunteer opportunity for parents? I mean, if they did another, um. Like they just had the movie event at school where they kept the kids after school to watch the movie till five. I mean, that was great. I would love to have gone in there from, you know, three thirty to five, grabbed the paintbrush and and helped out, and I think a lot of parents in this town, we. You know, really want like the best for our kids, and we'd be more than willing to help out with certain things like that. So if there's smaller jobs like that, that could help save money and. Even if it's not a permanent fix, but just a temporary fix, I mean, I certainly would be willing to help out in uh, any way that I could, so. Just kind of wanted to mention that as an idea maybe for for future things, maybe to put the feeler out and see, um, if anybody would want to do it.
Thank you, Jamie. Schools depend on volunteers for lots of reasons, and I appreciate the the offer. It's a good idea. Um, Nick, I think your hand came up next.
Hey, Nick, hello, forty-nine Myrtle. Um, I just want to start off, uh, saying something positive, uh. What Stephanie Knight, I believe it was, saying early in the very beginning, I think she's doing a great job there. Uh, quickly on what Jamie just had talked about, I think that's a great idea. And I would be one myself to help out if that was an opportunity in town. Um, in regards to December twenty-twenty-three, uh, on this list of being generated, I I just don't. See that as an acceptable timeframe. Uh, we have to think outside the box and and move this up quicker here. Um, the S S C G, which is the basically the security grant. I see it has a deadline of April twenty twenty-eighth, um. I just hope that the new school charge, uh, doesn't put us in jeopardy of losing out on this grant. I don't know what what that uh, has to do with it, but I just don't want to see us lose that grant because of such. Uh, we need to change that charge as soon as possible. And last, last thing here, you know, I'm just disappointed to see the Board of Education. Um, they haven't recommended that the S B C at the very least change the charge. I understand you guys may not have much control over them. But you can offer a recommendation to them. Without them changing, we are putting ourselves in a position. But you can offer a recommendation to them. Without them changing, we are putting ourselves in a position. Where we are hampering our abilities uh, for reimbursement on projects. Thank you.
Arthur Christensen, I recognize your hand went up after Nick's.
Arthur Christensen, fourteen Birch Meadow Lane. Uh, I could not help but hearing Nicole's comments earlier about the limited use of the playground due to the frozen ground. And I will once again stress that. We have put forward something to the ARPA Commission, and by we, I mean myself and, and Phil. To remedy a lot of that solution. And now that the school has failed. I'm hoping that the ARPA Commission will look back at that and put that, the, the, the soft paving around at least the, the small playground. At Center School and alleviate a lot of that issue because that was one of the big selling points. Is that ground really doesn't freeze as quickly as some of the other ground does. Um, I know that the ARPA funds were limited when we submitted, but I also know that this board has a. Fairly sizable non-lapsing fund that they could also kick in some money for to make that happen. So I'm really hoping. With that parental input that I just heard, that this gets pushed forward. Thank you.
And Ralph Tullis, I see you're on the screen.
Oh, hopefully you can hear me okay.
We can, go ahead.
Okay. Um, with respect to the.
Please start with your name and.
I'm sorry, Ralph Tullis, forty-seven Billishill Road. Uh, with respect to the school building committee, I, I think that it's time to. Uh, given the outcome of the referendum, to dissolve our current school building committee so that we do not jeopardize. Any uh, potential grant applications for some of the projects that you have on the list. Uh, I understand when we first started with the S B C that the roof grant was pulled. Because of the fact we had a school building committee. So, um, if that is indeed the case. Uh, are we jeopardizing? Any uh, grant possibilities by maintaining this school building committee under its current charge? Uh, certainly there's the option to. Uh, update or revise the charge. Uh, or better still, uh, quite honestly, dissolve it and reform a school facilities committee or something of that sort. That's it. Thank you.
I recognize Samantha Hills. Um, you've got your hand raised. If you would come off mute and start with your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Samantha Hills. I live at fifty-three St. Moritz Circle. Um, I just wanted to comment on, I'm so um, happy to hear about things that we could possibly be doing. And improvement is going to be made. I. Um, haven't really been following what's been going on with the Board of Education as much, um, as what's been going on with S P C. So I'm really excited to see some movement happening. I wanted to also, yeah, I was gonna make the point about the grant that I do know that it, um. I think the filing deadline on that is April twenty-eighth, and I believe that it's a bare minimum of like a fifty percent match rate. It is definitely structured as a matching grant. Um, but also. Um, some amount that they would reimburse was dependent upon. Our wealth as a town. So I thought that um, it could be greater than that. I'm not sure. Cause I'm not really sure where we fall uh, within the hundred and sixty-nine municipalities. Uh, the other grant that I think I also had heard mentioned, which was. Like a clean air, it's, it's for HVAC work and there is a second round of funding that would be. Um, submitted, or I'm sorry. Sent out after a date of August first, I believe is the second application date. So that's a huge project, but it's just exciting to think that there could be potentially some reimbursement. Um, from small projects, which I understand creates a, a whole different issue with structuring the. Uh, the order of things and you know, how it would all fit together. And I know that that's, that's a big challenge. Um. But I just wanted to throw those dates out there. And also I had heard another parent, I wasn't going to say this, but. I, I'm like a semi-professional painter and I would be happy to help paint the schools. Um, throughout the summer, giving up time, um, even organizing little patrols, you know, like let's, uh, for improvement. I've done it in other organizations. You know, like a cleanup day, you know, my daughter's dance school at our church. So if you, there's any need for something like that. Please feel free to reach out anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. We always appreciate people willing to help out in the schools because we do depend on volunteers for a lot of different things. Uh, we might not have depended on them for painting in the past, but um, it's definitely something. Uh, for us to consider. And let me jump to, back to my agenda. Um, we end our meetings with board comment. So if my colleagues on the board would like to step up. Person who goes first gets to say all the good stuff and everybody else can say ditto afterwards. If you want to talk, this is your chance to go first. And I think we're seeing a lot of people who are a little tired out right now. So I'm just gonna start calling on you and uh, you can say whatever you want going forward. And I saw your hand first, so go right ahead. You can start.
Um, just a couple of things. Um, I really appreciated Vanessa's letter today. And um, it's really incredible, the job that um. Stephanie and her awesome team are doing, and I want to thank them all for that. It's, it's really wonderful. Um, I also attended a very wonderful arts night at um, Hall School. Where they displayed artwork from children K through eight. And they also had the seventh and eighth grade um, musicians performing. So it was a wonderful time. Um, for the community to be together and celebrate the children. And I'm also glad, Phil, about that collaboration with the O Smith and really happy to hear that our kids are doing so well. And um, welcome Sarah at Hall.
Thanks, Anne. Would like to go next. Okay, you're gonna make me call on you. Go ahead, Laura.
I, I wanted to be able to say just the ditto and I'm.
Can't say ditto every month. We're gonna, you know.
Alright, so definitely wanted to thank Stephanie Knight and her awesome team. As I was listening to that, I thought back to my twelve years at Hall and how I ate school lunch there just about every day. And so when I'm hearing that it's getting even better, I think that's great because. I personally thought the lunches were very good and got better over my twelve years and also enjoyed green peppers. So, but, but a big shout out to what they're doing and they are incredibly important and especially uh, for many children, they are the adult that they connect to. And, and um. Are checking to see, you know, that, that, that these children are eating. Breakfast and, and lunch. Was very excited about the superintendent's report also as far as how our students are doing compared with the other sending towns to E O Smith. That they are right in line that, and, and the numbers, uh, eighty-two percent going on to post-secondary. Programs, that is fabulous. I did do the math. You said thirty-four students, six percent, that is two students. That are in the other category. Um, twelve percent is straight into the workforce is for students, you know, which there's. I'm just, you know, like, um. I think sometimes the actual numbers give more meaning than the percentages, uh, but so that is fabulous. Uh, welcome to Sarah and I think it was Lasendorfer. Yes, okay, I wrote that down. So welcome to her. I did want to say something, um, I didn't talk about the phonics curriculum, um, because I, I honestly was, was amazed. Um, but I did want to mention, like, the work that has gone into developing that to me is phenomenal. I am not an expert at all on early literacy or phonics, right? My, I'm a, I'm a science educator and, and more in the secondary realm. And so I just wanted, this was for you, Donna, I think. Because I, I, I can kind of understand. You don't feel like you can dig deep enough, but then I'm looking at these experts who have spent years and years training in this. And it's like, yes, you don't have time to dig deep enough because you would have to actually. Do years of education to get to the expertise that, that, that Kristen and Erin have. That, that they um, have worked towards. So I think as board members, sometimes we have to say. Alright, I'm going to look this over. I'm gonna look for, you know, something that, that maybe. Um, is, is concerning, but in the end, we have to trust the people that we have hired that are, are experts. That are doing this work. Um, so. You know, they, we, we simply cannot be experts on everything. Even those of us in education could not be experts in every field of education. And then. The last thing I wanted to, see, I was, I was just gonna say ditto. See, you shouldn't have let me go second. Now I'm busy here talking away. Um, you woke me up. But I am really tired. So Nicole, um. Who spoke about the playground, I share your concern. Um, because I firmly believe that children should be getting outside really in all weather. So this is something I think we definitely need to look into. Um, so I don't know what's going on there, right? This is the first I've heard of it, but it is something I think we need to look into. And um, as Arthur was saying, we've been looking into playground surfaces that won't freeze, that will be better. Um, but I know I, when I, of course, we had no sledding this year, I don't think. But when I was at Hall, students used to go out and go sledding. Um, the fourth and fifth grade in, you know, as long as they had a snowsuit. So. I think definitely something to look on because I am all about no child left inside. Um, outdoor education is really important. I think the outdoor tables. I'm assuming they seat six at a table because four would then be twenty-four students and that would be a class. So. Anyway, I will stop now because I think I'm just. Thank you all, uh. Enjoy the eighty degrees that we are gonna hit later this week. I hope that those upstairs classrooms don't get too awfully hot at Hall. Um, because they heat up really fast.
Excellent point. Okay, Donna, Herb, Tracy, Brianna? You can come on and say ditto or come on and say pass. Or we'll just move on.
I'll go next.
Go ahead, go ahead, Herb, and then Brianna.
I'll be brief. Uh, I wanna thank the. Food service program. For their presentation. It was very informative. And I feel. That they've done a good job this year and it will continue. Into next year. I understand. That most of our students. Will receive. Free lunch. And breakfast next year. For as long as the money lasts. Also, I want to, want to thank superintendent. For his, his information. Concerning. The E O Smith. Wellington students. Who seem to be. On a par. With other students. Also want, like to thank. The parents. This evening for their, their comments. In addition to that. I would like to see the board. Continue to. Protär highs. The. Issue of security. And not put it on. A back bonus somewhere. But put it out front. As one of our. Priority items. The agenda we had. This, this evening. Continued. Contained. A lot of information. And I want to thank Phil. For putting all this information out for us. You're not making it easy. For us. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Herb. I think Brianna, you were gonna be up next. If you're able to come off mute. Otherwise, you can do uh, an interpretive dance and we'll just guess what you might.
Oh, I didn't know that was an option. That's my favorite form of communication. I wish I knew. Um, yeah, a lot of great ideas have already been used up. So thank you to those who spoke before me. Um, but two quick things, I was also able to attend the evening of the arts. And it was incredible and we have so much to be proud of within our students and our staff. And I hope that when there are further events like that, um, everybody from town finds time to stop by. Um, the, the production of Frozen Junior is coming up in about a month, so I hope we'll have a large attendance there by. Family members as well as other citizens who don't necessarily have a student um, at Hall. And then, um, it's always great to have parents speaking up when they come to meetings. Um, during our present to speak time and also sending in emails through various forms of communication. And I just really urge all. Town citizens, especially the parents of students at Hall and Center, to continue to get involved, to become more involved. To attend town meetings, especially B O E and um, S B C as long as it stands. Because these things directly impact your students, your kids. And um, it's time to start listening. It's time to start participating and I hope that you will. Thanks.
Thanks, Brianna. Donna, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I do. Um, I too was fortunate enough to be able to attend the evening of the arts. And um, one of my recommendations is that. It be investigated how the art displays could possibly be put in the community room at the library. So that people who visit the library, who not necessarily either go out in the evening or would even consider. Going to an event at the school, um, would have the opportunity to see. Um, what the students have created. Some, some of the work was, was absolutely fantastic. In that way. So that's one. Um, the other is, I believe you inspect what you expect. And I will tell you, whether you knew it or you didn't, this board has approved curriculum that has contained blatant animal abuse. And when I brought up the fact that I was particularly concerned about um, some of the curriculum. I was told, trust the experts. So sorry, I do not trust the experts. Um, I have also asked on four different occasions for the sex ed curriculum. I have received four sentences. That is unacceptable. If I can't read our sex ed curriculum, I don't think our students. Should be seeing our sex ed curriculum. I have to question what's in there if you won't let me see it. So those are my takeaways. Um, I am excited. That parents are willing to help paint. I would be willing to help paint too. Um, and there are very valid concerns around the playground. I think that that should be. Looked at again sooner than later. Um, for a variety of issues. And if the presence of the S B C committee is going to have a negative impact. On our school's ability to get grants, Phil, um, please reach out to whoever needs to be reached out to and let them know that. Because the new building isn't happening and we need to be able to apply for grants that might benefit our students. Thank you very much.
Tracy, you've gone off camera, so I don't know if you wanted to pop on and uh, say anything else or if you're good with the way things are.
I'm sorry, my uh, internet's been unstable tonight, so I keep, everybody keeps freezing on me, so.
We can hear you fine if you want to just say it verbally. We're good.
No, I actually don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, so just a couple of quick items. One is clarification. The dates of Frozen is May fifth and sixth, hottest ticket in town. So get your tickets early, do not wait. Um, you're gonna wish we had air conditioning uh, in every gym. If it's, weather's anything like it's been this week. Um, uh, I did want to comment on the school playground issue. The hall playground has only one piece of equipment. Those are swings that are taken down in the winter until we can replenish the wood chips. And similarly in Hall School and Center School, the reason people aren't allowed on the playground is because you have to have a minimum of nine inches of wood chips. To protect against falls. And nine inches is a minimum. It's a requirement for any school that, or any childcare facility. It's also the best practices in the National Playground uh, Safety Institute Playground Safety, Safety Inspectors. I don't remember if the I is inspectors or institute. So they require twelve inches at first and then topping it off to a minimum depth of nine inches. So um, they're open when they're safe and they have to be judged safe first because um, there are accidents and injuries every year. We don't want kids breaking their arms falling off of a, a piece of equipment or flying off the swings too fast. So while I agree, every child left inside is not a, a good idea. We want them to be outside as much as possible, especially on good days. There are other ways to be outside until we're able to make sure the equipment is safe. But we do hear you that there's an urgency now that the weather's nice. I'm sure everybody's really uh, chomping at the bit. So we did hear you and that is something that. We will be moving ahead with, you know, as we do every spring, but trying, this year, spring seems earlier than it usually. But trying, this year, spring seems earlier than it usually does. So, um, might be on a faster timeline this year. Um, those were the two clarification points. Um, Phil, did I miss anything clarification points that you need? Okay. I, I just wanted to point out one other, um, notion that the school building committee is not the Board of Education. Um, there has been some confusion about that. So the school building committee is a committee of the town. It is established by the town. Um, whether or not there's a school building committee is not the only thing taken into account by the state when they're deciding whether or not to give a grant. Some grants are competitive, um, and some grants are not. Whether or not they're competitive, they take into account many, many different issues. Um, and whether or not they think it's a good investment in their money, whether you have a committee or not, um, is part of that consideration. So it's not a checkbox, like do they have a committee or not, and we're disqualifying ourselves. It's part of the consideration about how they want to, um, encourage towns to move towards what they consider good investments. So, um, there's, we are very aware of all of the grants that come out. I see the grants every day. There are a lot of them. Um, some of them we're eligible for and some of them are not. Uh, we do a pretty good job. Um, I have to congratulate you, Phil, for the number of grants you get out. You are a one-person office, you know, you and, uh, having your, your secretary support that. Um, we don't have a grant writer. Larger districts have full-time grant writing staff, sometimes more than one person, and that's what they do all day is write grants. We do not have that investment. If that were something that, um, and it's also in part because we're not eligible for every single grant. So it is something for us to be proud of that we've gotten as many grants as we have. But especially if we're looking at bigger projects, we are going to have to invest money in facilities of planning and grant writing and the necessary steps to manage those projects. Just getting, I, I feel bad, Phil, that we're asking you to come back in less than a month with all of the information about how we might spend down the money because you're going to have to get quotes from people. And that alone is a huge, um, bit of work. And if you had someone there in some way, whether contractor on staff or a town facilities planner, it might be something that could help us really get a handle on managing those projects. So I just want to put that out there as a planting a seed for thought because we have not invested in those types of services in the past. And if we're hearing from folks in town, they really want to invest in applying for as many grants as we're eligible for. And, um, going ahead with looking at what all of our facilities need and coming up with a smart plan to do this. Um, what we're talking about now is just kind of the, what can we do with the funds we have available in the next two months? Uh, two and a half months that we're very limited on that. But there are certainly a lot of things that have been on our to-do list for a while. And we will be having a lot more conversations about what our priorities are and how we can move ahead with those. But please remember, it's a very slow process. So even if we decide we wish to move ahead with something, capital improvements and investments in town require people to come out and support those at town meetings, requires us to go through multiple steps of process, including getting enough bids and, um, information about that. It is not a fast process. So we're moving as quickly as we can on the pieces that are easier. And we're doing some research and moving ahead on some of the other ones, but it will not be overnight. So just want to set your expectations at that. Okay, and it is nine seventeen and I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, you won't want to stay on this all night long.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Laura. Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions. Okay, motion passes and the meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting next month is May ninth, if I am correct. Yes, okay. Thank you all and have a good night.